Good evening and thank you. Welcome to the Town Council's special meeting, November 19th, 2024. We're at the DeLeo Senior Center. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Tassanari?
Here.
Counselor Costigan?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Here.
Counselor DiMarco?
Here.
Counselor Ayello?
Yeah.
Counselor Swope?
Here.
Counselor DeRoz?
Here.
Vice President Belcher?
Here.
President Lutteiri?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Pledge by Counselor Swope. So this special meeting is is for discussion and potential vote on the Planning Board's recommendation for compliance with 3A. Before, excuse me, before I start, I do want to take a moment to publicly thank the Planning Board. They were given a task well over a year ago, and they did a yeoman's work, I think. They had public hearings, they met with the council, they met with their helpers that we got them, and they were tasked with presenting a plan that had us comply with the state law, and they did that. So I thank them. I thank Chris Boyce, Sarah Fornas, Alyssa Gamble, Anna Rossette, and Jason Palatro for their incredible work. And, you know, they were tasked with a job. They did their job, and everyone here, either pro or against, should respect the work that they did. So thank them for that. The Planning Board made a recommendation which we will accept into the record. And as the process goes, before discussion, we will need a motion. So there is a motion, which I'll read, and then if somebody chooses to make that motion. And this is a motion that the Town Council, and just again for understanding, the motion would have to be, the motion would have to be to accept the recommendations. Then there could be discussion on the motion, and then the council, after discussion, potentially will vote on the motion. So the motion would be that the Town Council vote to accept the Planning Board's recommendation on Section 3A of the Mass General laws to recommend the creation of two distinct overlay zoning districts to comply with Section 3A. Seal Harbor, covering Seal Harbor and Fort Heath, as well as Governor's Park, without any impact on the CBD or take any other action thereto. The Planning Board also passed a motion outlining the necessary zoning changes, including the elimination of a special permit process for applicants seeking to pay the parking in Lufi, filed ordinance Section 17.50.210. The special permit requirement in this section would be removed and will be addressed during the site plan review process with the Planning Board approval or take any other action relative thereto. So I would ask for a motion to put that on the table.
Motion?
Motion by Counselor Swope. Is there a second?
Second by Counselor DiMarco.
All right, the motion is on the table. I will open it up for discussion. Counselor Tassanari?
Just for the record, I do want to reiterate my recusal from the issue based on my employment at MassDOT, and MassDOT being mentioned in the legislation under 3A. Thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Tassanari has recused himself from the conversation on this matter. Further discussion. Counselor Costigan?
I'm sorry. Mr. President, with regards to the text of the motion that stated 1114, the removal of the parking in lieu of fee, was that in the initial motion on the 14th? Or was that changed recently?
That came back from the state. That was one of the requirements in order, and again, and I'll ask the town manager to speak in a minute, but just for clarification, in order to get the 220 offset units, which is in part of the work that we had already done as a town, was to create a CBD. That CBD created X amount of units over foreseeable future. We were granted an offset to that. This does not put 3A in the CBD by any means, but in order to accept that offset, we had to eliminate special permit because there were no special permits allowed in this. So that's why that is part of this. It's still, as I said, stated without any impact on the CBD.
So in accordance to the Planning Board's presentation, the last presentation here, that was included initially, was it not? This, this language was included in the original?
Yes.
Correct. And it was taken out on the 14th? Just trying to clarify.
No, it was not taken out. This was one of the conditions that came back from the state on the cursory review.
Okay, okay. I'm a little confused with regards to the Planning Board because the Planning Board, I believe, on Tuesday showed us the recommendation that would be put forth to the council. And now it appears that that fee in lieu of parking has been removed. Is that correct? Mr. Town Manager, please.
If Counsel President may answer?
Yes.
The section's not removed, Counsel Costigan. It's just the site plan, the special permit requirement in that section has been taken out. It'll be done under site plan review so they can still pay in lieu of parking that $20,000 requirement. That's still all in there. The language doesn't change. It just won't be tied to a special permit requirement. It'll be done under site plan review.
And again, that is if this motion passes.
Thank you.
Counselor Ayello?
This is probably a question for the town manager, maybe the town council. It's my understanding from that. It is, sorry about that. I'll try and speak up. It is my understanding from that planning board session that our ability to modify that policy around parking in the town center remains within our own means. In other words, it's not affected one way or another. And that all one would need to do, something I'd like to pursue, is draft a motion to change that language to modify whether or not we want to continue allowing someone to, by the way, out of a parking spot for $25,000 or some other amount. So if that's correct, I intend to file a motion tomorrow.
That's correct, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. So we can still change it ourselves.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Swope?
Well, I wrote mine out. Winthrop has awakened as a community around the issue of 3A. You have emailed, you've attended meetings, held signs, made phone calls, gone to court, argued among yourselves, talked to our representatives, written and signed petitions, filed for an exemption. Many of you, many of you have spent more time, thought, and energy on this issue than anyone around this table. Some of you want to hear the Town Council vote. Many of you want to hear your voices heard through a townwide vote as this issue has great impact on our town now and in the future. I have been at almost every meeting. I have read every email written to me, and I'm sorry if I didn't respond, but I have read every single one. I have spoken to our representatives. I've read the law. I've read the decisions of other towns, and I've spoken to many of you. I have made my decision of a no vote based upon the following. The offset of the CBD is included in our 3A proposal from the Planning Board, and it will dictate our ability to change, create, and develop what the town of Winthrop wants in the CBD. Standards for mandatory mixed-use districts reads the following, the law. In order for a mandatory mixed-use district to be eligible to offset the required unit capacity, the district must meet the following standards. Of the eight standards, the following three standards could greatly impact us. One, there are no age restrictions or limits on unit size, number of bedrooms, bedroom size, or number of occupants, and the residential units permitted are suitable for families and children. Two, non-residential uses are limited to the ground floor. Three, there are no minimal parking requirements associated with the non-residential uses allowed as of right. Winthrop should be able to decide what we want. A business that is two stories versus just the ground floor. Apartments or condos that are residence for over 55 communities. Small and large units, parking structures that allow visitors to come and shop, et cetera. Two, a state-controlled property is designated, while it may not change immediately, is under the control of the state, not our town. The question posed to the AG's office offers the following response. Does a passage of an MBTA compliant zone require changes to existing properties? The answer to that was no. The passage of a zoning district to comply with the MBTA community's law does not require existing property owners to alter their properties or to change otherwise lawful restrictions in leases of homeowner-association contracts. The next one's a kicker, though. It merely allows the multifamily housing, that multifamily housing can be developed as of right should a property owner choose to develop it. The future should be ours, not the state's. As an example, under the current regulations, Fort Heath, a family-owned building could ask the town for permission to change the configuration of the building. But the abutters, the Planning Board, the Ordinance Appeals Board, and the Building Inspector would have some oversight in that decision, those decisions that are made. 3A allows building by right. Early on, number three, early on, Ms. Edwards appeared to support our development plans. Although it appeared that a visit to Winthrop by Augustus would demonstrate that Winthrop was truly different than other communities in density, traffic, airport pollution, need for improved infrastructure, lack of school funding, et cetera, not sure it did. Certainly, the state would not wreak more havoc on us. As soon as Milton fought the bill and Ms. Edwards said she would crush them, I was worried. At first, I thought it was just a mistake by a junior senator. However, she continues to support punishment if a town or city does not comply with 3A. We will see if she and Mr. Turco stand up to the state in support of Winthrop. The visit by Augustus did not change the required accounting for 882 units, albeit many of them are also assumed under what we already have. Four, we have an exemption case in the courts. Why is the town not supporting it? All of you who claim that the state might take money away, wouldn't you like the courts to find us exempt? I don't want to interfere with this case going forward. It would be our salvation. A vote yesterday would destroy our chances. Five, while none of us really knows what the future holds, a no vote could be in the future, be a yes vote depending on the changing rules and regulations. You would not take a mortgage on your home that was this fluid. You will vote, I will vote no tonight, realizing that given the forever-changing regulations, a future yes vote is possible. For example, if the Attorney General wrote a formal letter to Winthrop that said no additional housing would be built in our, in the future, as a result of 3A, not that we wouldn't build it ourselves, but as a result of 3A, I would certainly reconsider my vote. One last thought. Those of you that are so positive that increases in housing will never happen here as a result of 3A might think about being willing to pay for the additional school, increased personnel, and physical infrastructure needs. If this goes through, we may find that the costs far outweigh the benefits. We are just one of 177 towns impacted by this law. Hopefully, we can join forces and successfully fight the state's overreach.
Counselor DeRoz?
Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Counselor Swope. You have worked on this hard since it was first introduced. With all due respect, I see things a little bit differently. At the Planning Board's presentation last, at the Planning Board's presentation last Tuesday here in this room, I publicly thanked everyone on both sides of this issue for all their hard work and great questions in vetting the 3A law and guidelines and their implications for Winthrop. I then thanked the Planning Board for their tremendous effort over the past year in helping us all go to school on all things zoning, understanding the 3A law and guidelines, and for taking on the challenge of crafting a plan that would comply with the law while resulting in minimal to no impact on our already dense town. I then asked Planning Board Chair, Chris Boyce, to bottom line it for me and the town. I asked him, here are my four key takeaways from your final plan presentation. Tell me if I got this right. Number one, how will your recommended plan change Winthrop in any way, if at all? My takeaway, the impact will be zero. Chris's response, that is correct. Number two, is there any chance, any possibility that your recommended plan, is there any chance or any possibility that your recommended plan will result in overdevelopment, like the Seaport or Revere Beach? My takeaway, there is no chance of that happening under this plan. Chris's response, that is correct. Number three, will there be any impact to the residents of the overlay districts, Seal Harbor 1 and 3, Fort Heath, and Governor's Park? My takeaway was, there will be no impact to those residents. Chris's response, you are correct. Number four, will the mixed-use nature of our central business district be impacted at all? My takeaway, no. The CBD will still require ground-floor commercial. It has been that way for 10-plus years and will remain that way. Chris's response, that is correct. Finally, I asked him to reiterate the 10% affordable housing provision they are including in the plan, although it is not required by the 3A law. Folks, the Planning Board was given a tough task, and from my view, they nailed it. They nailed it so well that the plan's overlay districts actually zone for less units than exist in those locations today. God forbid if Seal Harbor burned down tomorrow, a builder would need a whole host of special permitting to build back as many units as there are there today. A yes vote will enable us to comply with the law while maintaining eligibility for a list of grants that are key to the future of Winthrop, especially climate resiliency grants that we sorely need. People in our town are hurting today from flooding, and it's only going to get worse if we don't vigorously pursue state grants for design and engineering work and federal grants for construction and implementation. As the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee and a member of the Climate Commission, I can tell you, we need the money. In the coming weeks and months, you will see the Climate Commission provide very specific estimates on the best options to tackle the situations at Morton Street, Pico, Tileston and Girdlestone, Ural Beach, Delby's Corner, and others. The earthen berm for Morton Street will cost over $12 million alone. The price tag across town will most likely land in the 50 to 75 million dollar range when all is said and done. To my fellow counselors considering voting no on the Planning Board's plan, I ask you three things. One, to remember, as Council President Lutteiri correctly stated at our last council meeting, we cannot vote no on a state law. We are voting yes or no on the Planning Board's recommended plan. Number two, what parts of the plan would you like the Planning Board to change? Are there specific things you would like them to consider? And number three, where do you see funds available in the town budget to pay for a court battle with the state? My understanding is Milton has spent several hundred thousand dollars to date. To date, 83 of the 177 communities required to comply with 3A have passed compliant 3A zoning. Some of these were skeptical of the law at first, but then crafted zoning that's right for their town and passed their 3A zoning. Like Gloucester, for example, on October 1st, they passed it by a seven-to-nothing city council vote with two counselors recusing themselves. If you truly care about the future of Winthrop, and I know everyone in this room does, I urge you to vote yes on the Planning Board's recommended plan. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Vice President Balcha?
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who's here on both sides of the issue. Everyone's been engaged. And a special thank you to people who've done so respectfully and productively. I'm looking forward to seeing everybody involved in looking at other forms of zoning that increase affordability in our community, make it right-sized for where we are and beneficial to the community. It seems like there's a desire across the aisle to do so. There are still some lingering questions as far as 3A goes, namely, the Milton case hasn't come back from the SJC yet. I've been consistent from the beginning that I don't think it's appropriate to vote without that information. We don't have a clear picture of what the repercussions are for noncompliance, and I don't think it's appropriate to vote without that information. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to the 12:03 council meeting.
Okay, there's a motion to continue. There's a second by Counsel Ayello. Is there discussion on the motion? All right, I would just say before we vote that there is no guarantee when we're going to get an SJC ruling. So that could be in a week, could be in a month, could be in two months. I feel we've kind of talked this issue to death on both sides, and I think it's time to stand up and vote. With that being said, I will take a roll call vote on the motion. So there is a motion to table this until December 3rd? Until December 3rd. Roll call, please.
Counselor Costigan?
No.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
No.
Counselor Ayello?
Yes.
Counselor Swope?
No.
Counselor DeRoz?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President Lutteiri?
No. I believe that's four to four. The motion does not pass. Continued discussion, please. I understand there's a lot of feelings both ways. Please let us just get to discussion and get to voting, and I'm sure the attendance will dwindle after that, maybe. Further discussion on 3A, on the motion. Counselor Munson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regardless of how this vote goes tonight, I think Winthrop needs to remember that we will still be neighbors. And I think it's important, the tone that's happened and then the infighting that's happened has really been bad for Winthrop. I don't know if it's the no to 3A leaders that have really changed the tone by being, you know, a little more aggressive than, what's not acceptable, what's not acceptable is people making false accusations, threatening people. It's become toxic. At the end of the day, this is just a vote. We're still going to be neighbors. It's not life or death. Let's remember to just be kind and be civil to another, one another. So that's essentially what I want to state. This law was poorly drafted and written. And when it first came out and they asked us for 882 units, an overwhelming majority of us were appalled, and it is appalling. We can't afford 882 units. We're already overdeveloped. It would tax our police departments, our fire departments, and our school systems just can't handle it. Right now, we don't even have the money to actually fund what we've got going on. Before you know it, our class sizes are going to be huge, and with more people coming, it would just crush this town. But time allowed the state to see our situation. We are already dense, and so instead of this one-size-fits-all, they started to listen. We pushed back. Planning Board came back with a proposal, and they have delivered and tentatively verbally agreed, the state has verbally agreed, to accept what is essentially an exemption. No new units. And we can all disagree on the veritable, you know, like the variations, the interpretations, but on paper, it's zero new units. We can all have our conspiracy theories, and we can all have our worries, but essentially, right now, the state has agreed to zero new units.
Please give the respect.
So what I'm asking for is for people to understand that if there are changes in the future to this state law above and beyond the agreed-upon email to Jim Cipolletta, our town counselor, our town lawyer, saying that the condo docs are not superseded, if they were to say something and make a change that was egregiously different and change the nature of this law, we could not comply then. But when we not comply now, what we're doing is we're guaranteeing ourselves hundreds of thousands of dollars in lawsuits. Aren't we not? Aren't we not? And we already lost, Jack Dowd's out of order as usual. And if you want to continue, Jack, feel free, come right on up.
Counselor Munson, please, get to your point.
God bless him, and God bless everyone that's sticking up for their town. And essentially, everyone here, thanks, Diana.
Please.
Everyone here cares for this town. And everyone here has their own version of what this law does and doesn't do. So at the end of the day, it's a vote. Let's not get overwhelmed with it. Let's make the vote and move on. At the end of the day, we are looking at the consequence of losing some, not only some grants that they have promised, but essentially, the state, at the top of the state is the governor. A lot of things go through her door. And if it's discretionary, do you think that after snubbing them, they're going to just go ahead and say, yeah, sure, everything's cool, just those one or two things, no big deal? It is still personal even at that level. So I caution you to be overzealous in protecting this town to the point of being against the law. And for that reason, I think we should go ahead and try to comply now and keep fighting for exemption and keep fighting for this law to be unconstitutional without having to take a loss. I'm being strategic, and I think we should all try to be. Thank you.
Counselor Costigan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I did have a lot prepared here tonight. I will read what I have anyways. A lot of it is a carbon copy of Counselor Swope, which I'm in full agreement of. And with regards to Counselor Munson and some of the banter back and forth, this is a result of the pressure put onto us by the state. Let's admit that here. This is being jammed down our throats. This is what happens when you try to force something on a community that doesn't want it, and they feel desperate, they have no say. I mentioned in another meeting that the studies have been done. It's bad for the health, it's bad for the overall community, and this is what's going on here. So I would say, please, please, limit all of that back-and-forth vitriol and work together as a town here. That's all I'm trying to say. You know my stance on 3A. Let me get to what I'm going to say here. With regards to needing of more units, let's go back to the drawing board here in Day 1, when this was the bill to end all bills to cure our housing problem. Well, we know, I'm not going to bore you with the over and over again anti, you know, bill itself. It's a bad bill, bottom line. So the need for housing units, initial need to add units, for affordability, not. Okay? This proposal, if you listen to the reasons why to pass it, doesn't add one unit. Therefore, nothing will change in Winthrop. That has been said to me the past couple of days. Okay, so therefore, well, if nothing will change in Winthrop, I'm suspect to that. Wasn't the initial reason to vote for 3A in the first place to create units? And the yes on 3A is all of a sudden for no? And the yes on 3A is all of a sudden for no units? I'm a little confused here, okay? And we won't even get into, well, we will get into the grant money here. Aside from that, need for grant money to fund projects in the town, flooding, infrastructure, et cetera, schools, all on board with that. We need it. Grant money has been nearly nonexistent over the last decade, okay? And now the state wants to, wants to put other additional restrictions on this town. I got news for you. Trump was just voted into office. I don't know if you've, I don't know... You're not going to like my follow-up. He has put a fossil fuel oligarch in charge of the EPA. If you think you're getting federal monies for any flooding here in Winthrop, I could sell you a bridge, okay? Just pay attention to who the hell's going into office here. We are not going to get 14, 18 million, 75 million from the feds. He's going to abolish the EPA, I got news for you. So the initial money we were going to get from the state was for studies, for engineering. There's several engineers in this room right now, they can tell you that. Very costly to design, engineer, et cetera. Okay, override money for the schools. Obviously, this town has no, no appetite for a school override. I said that in one of my meetings, that 3A has substantially affected this town to a degree, that people do not feel included, and again, for multiple reasons here. And again, I'll go back to the state, shame on them. Shame on our state representatives. Shame on people not lobbying more for the town of Winthrop. They come around this town looking for votes when they need the votes, and then where the hell are they after that? So aside from that, the community is unfortunately, does not have the appetite for a school override. Again, obviously, this town is broke, right? Now we segue into the firehouse. Do you think the firehouse is going to pass with the attitude of the constituents here in this room right now, let alone the town? If we failed the children of this town, do you think we're going to step up and give that money to the firefighters? I question that substantially, so. Planning Board recommendation, and again, this is after I discovered that this had been removed, but keep your eyes on the Center Business District, everybody. The elimination of that special provision for special permit is suspect raises a red flag in my eyes. We can have no development in Seal Harbor, we can have no development in the Governor's Park, but the crown jewel here is the CBD. Four stories, and I said before, every entrance waited at the center of town, two and a half on the outskirts there. I'd like to just say right now, I'm going to be proposing a two-and-a-half-story limit for the Center Business District and eliminate the 2014 ordinance to allow a buyout for vehicles. If I am going to go further into what the problem is here, this is going to lead to a severe safety issue in this town. We have flooding, as Mr. DeRozan has mentioned. I'm on the CACC as well. And Mr. Munson, big concern for the funding of projects around this town. But the CBD, there's a reason why that is being eyed. If you remember, the first area circled here in Winthrop was the beach area, waterfront property. So again, I'm just saying, keep your eyes open, be as active as you are right now when it comes to any type of ordinance, a change of variance in the Center Business District, stay on top of that, be diligent. I will be doing that myself as a council member. So again, one of my major concerns here, that is the crown jewel here. So I'm not going to get into the, into the Seal Harbor and the Governor's Park area. That's yet to be determined. Let's see how the rubber hits the road in those areas. In addition, what we voted on tonight includes, you know, a provision to eliminate the requirement of special permit, which I've already mentioned here. So congestion and safety issues. Logan International Airport, I mentioned, if a plane crashes in the center of town here, I got news for you. We're trying to get the hell out. Well, you have Boston Fire with a Level 3 trying to get 50 pieces of equipment in here. It's not going to work too well. Narrow roads, let alone if they start to cut those roads down, limit them to bus lanes and everything else here. These are cow paths. These are an old part of this country that these pathways were constructed because of the cattle, because of the migration of animals at one time. So again, you go out to California, you get seven lanes out there all day long. I give you three bus lanes and a couple of bike lanes. That's all well and good, but here, we're in old New England. This town is congested, and if allowed to go through with regards to development of the CBD, the units 225, I will put my paycheck on it, it will exceed 225, would all said and done if allowed to go through. That being the case, with the 600 to 900 units that are already proposed to be built in this town, along with the CBD development, we'd be looking at probably anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500 units. Times that by two cars, 3,000 more cars in this town, 3,000 more people at a minimum, our population at 22,000 people, never that high. And that's a conservative estimate. So again, that is me, you can prove me wrong if you'd like, but these are my fears, and that is why I will be voting no on this.
Council Aiello, please.
So I'd like to pick up on what Council Costigan just talked about, and let me be clear. I agree with every one of the fears that he just outlined, 100%, except it's important to know that every single one of those fears relates to something that is something other than 3A. Let me walk you through them. The current density we have today, with everything is congested, we did to ourselves, no one else did it to us. The specter of 900 units coming on board because of zoning that previous town councils did, that he mentioned, we did to ourselves, nothing to do with 3A. The issue about the parking and the ability to get relief from parking, we did ourselves. We can undo it, just talked about at the beginning of the meeting. Nothing, nothing to do with 3A. Those problems are very real. I have tried to raise the issue of getting emergency planning documents to think about mobility under crisis, studies done in this town. I have gotten support from nobody, and they don't get done. I've asked for a fiscal impact study to understand what's going to happen with these 900 units that are coming in, not 3A, because 3A is zero. And I have been stifled, gotten no support from anybody else, and we still have no idea whether we're floating into bankruptcy or we're floating into a better fiscal situation. We have no idea, we're flying blind. Those are the things you should be insisting on. 3A has given you nothing, zero new units, zero impact, and it's something when we pass it, you can forget about it. Let me tell you about now going to no. And I understand why people are upset, because you've heard all sorts of things. You've heard that they were going to take two-bedroom apartments in Seal Harbor and turn them into six-bedroom apartments, didn't you? Well, it turns out that's not true. You've heard that the Center Business District was going to be a 3A overlay, and people continue to argue there's a 3A overlay, when it's not. The planning board was very clear about this stuff. So you've gotten a lot of bad information, but here's the big problem with no. On yes, we can assure you, I want to guarantee it, well, the guarantee will come when we submit the plan. If we're to vote yes, either here or the general population in a townwide vote, we get to yes, we get the plan certified by the state, and it says exactly what the planning board said, they certify it, and we're done. Where does no take us? I'm a little bit worried about the legal fees, but honestly, that's not my big worry. Where do we end up? Does this Commonwealth of Massachusetts say, "Okay, Winthrop, we give up, you don't have to do anything"? There's a history around this country, and we've seen it, the worst case we've ever seen is the city of Boston with respect to desegregating the public schools, okay? They kept saying, "No, we're not going to do it, no, we're not going to do it, no, you can't make us do it, no, it's not the right thing to do." And what happened? They got a judge put in front, in charge of their school system, and look at the bedlam that created, okay? We're going to get told, "Oh, it's okay"? I don't think so. I think when we say no, we're going to get a solution imposed upon us. It's very possible that a pissed-off Commonwealth of Massachusetts could say, "You know, that's 225 units, correct it? Kiss it goodbye, baby. You're now going to get 225 additional units on top of the 900 that Patrick Costigan's thinking about." There are other problems in this town we can deal with as well. Zoning Board of Appeals, almost every meeting, you've seen them in your neighborhoods, all of a sudden, there's a four-story building here and a four-story building there. Pay attention to those things. No takes you down a dangerous path where you don't even know what the answer's going to be. You think you're diving off the edge of a stone ledge into a nice calm lake? There may be ledge two feet under that water that we're going to go crash headfirst into. You're buying something you have no idea how dangerous it could be to this town. You want to play that game, then think about your children, think about your grandchildren, and when they say to you 20 years from now, "How come we don't get any more money for things like Revere Street? How come we don't get any more money for the town, things like the town center that did all our new utilities over? How come we don't get more money for schools?". You tell them, "Well, I guess I was wrong." In 1990, talk about wrong-headed stuff that sounded nice at the time, we got about 25 million bucks from the MWRAs as an upfront mitigation payment. Anybody remember that?
Absolutely.
All right? Look it up now. Look up, if you had taken 25 million bucks and you had simply put it in an investment fund on behalf of the town, you look at what the S&amp;P has done in terms of investments, if you just put it in one of those, you know, whatever they call those kinds of things, it would be worth $300 million today. $300 million today we'd have as a piggy bank to pay off, use the interest, use the earnings to help solve our problems. It sounded good when they said, "Okay, let's not increase property taxes this year, we'll take it out of the 25 million. Let's not raise property taxes, the next year we'll take it out of 25 million." All that sounded good in the short term, but it was poisonous in terms of a lost opportunity in the long term. Think about where you're going with no. You're jumping into a pond and you have no idea what's underneath the water. It's very dangerous. I would just conclude by saying, the planning board are non-political people, they're professionals. We have all learned of the work that they've done. I trust if they say we get zero, we're really going to get zero. I trust if they...
Please.
Well, you're calling the planning board liars then, okay? Which is fine, you can call the planning board liars, just stand up and be counted and identify yourself. That would be a wonderful civic duty to do. So...
Please.
I know we're going to lose the vote today from the council, I have no doubt, and I have no doubt we're going to be on the ballot sometime in March or April, or whenever we get around to doing it. I hope that people keep an open mind and think about the end result of the path to no compared to the certainty of the path to yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise, does Counsel DeMarco wish to make a statement?
Counsel DeMarco, would you like to speak?
Yeah, so in my opinion, this is common sense. I represent my constituents in Winthrop, who everybody, well, for the most part, everybody that I've spoken to is vehemently against this. The basic question is, who do we want to decide the zoning in Winthrop? Do we want the state of Massachusetts to decide, or should we, the people of Winthrop, decide? That's why I'm voting no.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you. Before I speak, I do want to ask the town manager if he would like to say anything before we vote.
Everything's been settled, okay. So we've talked about this for quite a long time, and I said almost sarcastically in January that this was going to be the bane of our existence and take every day and put an incredible amount of pressure on the town, on its citizens, and on the council, and it has done that. I do want to thank the yes and the no people. I mean, good points on both sides, right? I do want to incredibly thank Representative Jeff Turco for standing with Winthrop and helping us in every way he can and being there at meetings and doing what he can to support the town. I thank him for being here tonight, so thank you very much. I also would like to, to just give a brief update. A yes vote on this motion. The motion is to accept the planning board's recommendation. So a yes vote would comply with 3A, a no vote would not comply with 3A. To pass this, you need five yes votes. Now, having said that, I think 3A is a flawed law. I think there's, to me, very little debate on that. There are towns that are unique. We like to think of ourselves as unique, and we are, to me, unique. And there are other towns that I'm sure consider themselves unique for different reasons. To me, one of the biggest problems I have with this is we're being punished for doing this work ahead of time, for being ahead of the curve. We created zoning to add additional units to help our base. Our population hasn't really changed since the late 1950s. We were at 19,000 and change in 1950s, we're at 19,000 and change now. So we, we're aware of that, and we realize that we, it's very hard for us to survive on a limited income stream, right? We don't have a lot of commercial base. We're one of the lowest in the state at less than 6% of our tax rate is based on commercial businesses. Basically, this town is supported by its citizens. We've created waterfront zoning, we've created CBD zoning, which in time will bring more units. Those units don't bring in an astronomical amount of income to the town, especially in terms of apartments. It's small compared to single-family homes, two-family homes, condominiums. Counsel Costigan mentioned earlier that one of the primary reasons for this bill is that people feel that there's a housing crisis in Massachusetts. So if we agree with that premise, and that premise only, this bill by all accounts, and it's been said by yes and no people here, doesn't potentially create any units, so why would a yes person be happy with this outcome? Now, the answer to that, if I could be so bold to answer that question, it's because of the potential loss of grants. That's the tactic, right? That's the scare tactic, and it's worthy, right? I mean, there are multiple grants that are affected by this, there are no federal grants affected by this. The MSBA is not affected by this as of now, who knows, anything could change, right? Originally, there were three or four grants that were changed, that were tied to this. Now there's in the teens, right? And the one that does have an effect on us is the MVP grant. We haven't been awarded a ton of money over the years, but over the last few years, we have been awarded upwards of 700 million a year, 700,000 a year, excuse me, 700 million on the yes.
Yes.
So there are, you know, obviously, money is a concern, right? We rely on some of these grants. The MVP grant is helping us with Morton Street. We were also denied an MVP grant earlier this year, while Revere was accepted of the MVP grant. So do I have concerns about that? I do. But Winthrop, like I say, Winthrop is unique, and again, we're a very special town. Can we be stubborn at times? We can, but you know, I believe you, I believe strongly you have to stand up for what you Counsel Aiello just said, chances are, no matter how this council votes, this will probably be on a ballot sometime in early spring, and I think he's probably right with that. There would be a referendum process, there would be signatures that would have to be certified, and it would, and it would be on a ballot. But I look at, and we've all received countless emails, I mean, we receive emails on a very, not to this scale, very often at all. And, you know, they seem to come in waves, and there's 10 yeses, then there's 10 no's, and then there's 20 yeses, and there's 15 no's, or whatever there happens to be. And you look at it, and I believe Denise had a piece of paper today with names of yes, names of no's, and you look at it and you say, "Well, there was probably, you know, 35 yeses and probably 30 no's", or whatever, and that's 65 people. And then I look and say, "Okay, there's 65 people..." And then I look and say, "Okay, there's 65 people, and there's 14,500 registered voters in town." So there are very passionate people on both sides in relatively small groups, and there are a lot of people that I'm sure are passionate that just don't have the time or the energy or the inclination to really get involved and come. And I'm sure we have a much higher attendance. We should have had pay-per-view. Maybe we could have made up for some of the grants, but... I do want to say, though, that, you know, I have been very upfront on my feelings on this since January, and I haven't changed. I don't think this is the right thing for Winthrop. I know there, you know, consequences we will deal with, but this is not the right thing for Winthrop at this time. So having said that, I will close the discussion, and I will ask for a roll call vote. So again, a yes vote would comply with 3A, a no vote would not comply. You need five yes votes to pass this motion. Denise?
Counselor Costigan?
No.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
No.
Counselor Aiello?
Yes.
Counselor Swope?
No.
Counselor DeRoz?
Yes.
Vice President Belchow?
Abstain.
Counsel President Mittery?
I'm going to ask for an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Vice President Belchow, second by Counselor Aiello. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We will take a five-minute recess.